Let's go over the agenda and take a look at what we have tonight and see if we have any changes or other issues we need to talk about before we get started. We have start of course with the pledge allegiance and invocation. Then we get to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions about the consent agenda or anything that we need to talk about? Okay. Then we get to good news, proclamations. I don't think we have any tonight, do we? We have, there's always good news, but we don't have a specific part we're going to talk about, I guess we should put it. We have public hearings. We have two scheduled. John, is the high wire still on? It's been pulled. Okay, that one will not be heard tonight. And then we have a zoning request for the citizen bank. Debbie, Debbie's here to talk about that. We'll have a public hearing on that. Ladies and gentlemen, when we have public hearings on zoning requests, you can speak at the public comment, which is the first thing we do after our pledge and invocation. You can speak on that, but we prefer you speak when we have the public hearings. So if anyone's here on the first citizen, you're welcome to speak both. You probably have a little more of impact if you speak when we have our public hearing though. Okay? Any questions about the zoning requests from the first citizens bank? And then we have new business. We have capital projects ordinance, the capital, I guess, here. Family justice, I see a lot of family justice people here. Thank you, Julie. We're going to be talking about the contributions of the contractors and local groups, and I think some of them are probably here too. And we thank you for that. Look forward to hearing that. Any questions at this point for Julie before we get going here? Okay. Next, we have the approval of the wish list for both the county schools and the city schools. I see some great school officials here. We appreciate your feedback. And this is, as I understand it, Tim, you're going to be, are you going to be handling this one or the Bunkham County part of it? Nope. Furley, not Furley, okay. Furley's here, okay. Down there, the other Tim.
I'm working on him.
All right, the other Tim's going to handle that. Tim, thank you for being here. And Dr. McAllister, I think is here with the city. Yep, hi from the back there. How you doing, doctor? Thank you. Then we're going to have board appointments. We interviewed this earlier today for the Riverfront. I think we're ready for that one. Are there any other boards that people would like to interview for? We have scheduled the tourism development authority, the economic development coalition, historic resource commission, and the board of equalization. We have five reappointments in five positions. Does anyone want to interview any of the rest of the boards besides the one we interviewed for earlier?
Well, it's current practice that we add more advocates than we do base.
Okay. So we're interviewing for the TDA. Yeah, we should probably interview for both TDA and EDC. I would recommend that the historic, we could, there's two people for one vacancy. You might as well go and interview for that one too unless someone objects. Okay, plus Commissioner James is out of town today, so she will not be here, and I'm sure she won't be part of that. Then we do announcements. Any need for a post session tonight? Okay, all right. So any questions about the order that we have tonight? Well, here none, we will, I got 4:31, so let's go and get started. I'd like to call to order the February 2, 2016 meeting of the Bunkham County Board of Commissioners, and we will start with our pledge of allegiance and follow by the invocation until you'll join me.
I love you to death through the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, in the temple of liberty and justice for all.
And if you'll join me in prayer. God, as we enter the campaign season, we're grateful to live in a country where leadership is decided by votes, not violence, threats, intimidation, fist, guns, or bullying. We hold up all individuals who have agreed to serve us and thank them for their willingness to take the required time, energy, and commitment to hold elective office. Thank you for all the opportunities each of us have to improve Bunkham County by service on committees, boards, nonprofits, churches, PTAs, and all the other groups that work to make our communities, schools, programs, and government itself better. Thank you for the excellent staff that carries out our policies and decisions at all levels of Bunkham County government. They show knowledge, compassion, fairness, and attention to people we represent and have been entrusted to take care of. Help us to make good decisions and judgments that move Bunkham County from great to even greater times when every resident can count on a good healthcare system, a good education, a good job prospect, good chance of finding a workforce, housing that they can afford, and a good place to retire and enjoy their senior years. Thank you for these opportunities. Open our minds and our ears to listen to the public as we have our meeting tonight. Amen. The next thing we're going to talk about is our ethics in the board. It's in accordance with our board of codes ethics, all county commissioners have the duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of their official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Also, does any board member have any financial interest in any public contract that may come before the board tonight? Hearing none, I find that all board members do not have a conflict, and each will have the duty and obligation to vote on each matter tonight. Next item of business we have on our agenda is public comment. The time limit for any comment to the board is three minutes. If your time expires, you may leave any question along with your name, address, phone number, or email with the clerk, Kathy Hughes. Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during the public comment. This is your time to talk to us. Comments should be limited to subjects that are within the jurisdiction of the Bunkham County Board of Commissioners or pertain to matters upon which we may act. Any individual speaking during public comment shall address the entire board. Any polling of board members is inappropriate. Persons addressing the board are expected to observe the decorum of the chambers and to be respectful of everyone in the room, whether you agree with their opinions and thoughts or not. Any person who willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts a session will be asked to leave the meeting. And the Board of Commissioners reserves the right to deny a public address on any subject previously presented to our board. Is there any public comment tonight? Yes, sir, Mr. Yelton. Anyone want to speak after Mr. Yelton?
I'm Don Yelton Jupiter. I'm going to come and I'm going to speak and I'm going to go because I've been coming here long enough where I know we're going to get some 4-3 votes because it's now election time. But David, you're the only one up there that remembers when I told this board a long time ago about CTS was going to have problems with it. Now you're leaving the board so there'll be nobody there to remember that, so I want to tell you all this while you're there, David. You've got a major, major problem with recycling, not just in Bunkham County, not in just this state, but nationwide. China's economic conditions has destroyed the market for recycling. So you've got a problem with the pileup, but there are ways to manage that. Several things can be done. You can separate the wood fiber separate from the commingle recyclers. The wood fiber might be able to be made into pellets and used as wood pellets in stoves. I see you're enlarging your CND landfills. You might be able to take prison labor and separate out the wood that's not painted or stained, grind that up, and you might be able then to use that to heat. One scoop, just one scoop, folks, that proves that something there worthwhile. Recycling has been subsidized by grants. You've got to make it work itself. So I called to find out about the environmental affairs board advisory committee, and I find out it's defunct, it's not being met. I would suggest to you, David, and this board, that you seriously consider starting that board back up because South Carolina is now having problems with their landfill and expanding that one in Spartanburg where waste management takes their stuff. We also know that Waste Pro and several other companies that are required to bring their garbage to Bunkham County or not bring it to Bunkham County, but we probably don't really care because that's going to extend the life of their landfill. So you're playing a game that's going to catch up with you down the road. Yes, I called the landfill and I find out about recycling for us, and you're using, guess what I'm told? Put them in the dumpster. You call EPA, EPA says if you break one in the room, you're supposed to clear the room for 15 minutes. You can't vacuum it up, sweep it up. You're supposed to pick it up at duct tape. Now, that's sending weird messages to people. I called the landfill and asked about batteries. They'll take nickel hydride batteries at Home Depot, but your regular batteries, guess what? Throw them in the garbage. What batteries have in it? Heavy metals. What's in the fluorescent tubes? Mercury. Heavy metals. Where does that go? That goes in the leachate. The leachate goes where? MSD. From MSD, it goes where? In the French Brouhaha River and to the water supply in Knoxville, Tennessee. Now, if you kick this board back up, David, I suggest you seriously consider appointing some people on that board that know what recycling is, know what it's about, and has their finger on the pulse of what can be done, and we need some commitment up there and that are willing to take a gamble and try something new. And I bring this to you as a very serious concern. Now, you either take what I say and follow it, or down the road, you'll have another CTS on your hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yelton. Any other members of the public wish to be heard tonight? Yes, yes, ma'am, Ms. Baldwin.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Lisa Carpenter Baldwin, and I'm a former Bunkham school board member, now running for the state senate district 48 seat. Tonight, you are tasked with a very weighty matter of approving a five-year capital expenditure plan for Bunkham County schools. Over the next five years, the Bunkham County School Board plans to spend $56 million. Due to special legislation enacted years ago, Bunkham County Schools receives a portion of the Article 39 sales tax revenues. This is earmarked for construction and comes to about $12 million per year. Plus, BCS receives an additional $9 million per year for other capital projects like roofs and parking lot repaving. However, in recent years, BCS has seen a sharp decline in enrollment. Just in the past two years, over 1,000 students have left Bunkham County schools. As education choice in North Carolina expands, this decline could be more severe over the next five years. Because of the excess capacity in existing schools, I hope you will question any building projects or renovations in the plan. We all know that redrawing attendance lines is the most appropriate way of dealing with balancing school populations. I hope you will ask the hard questions. Do these capital expenditures put STEM, science, technology, and engineering learning labs in all of our high schools? To enable students to qualify for higher-paying jobs or enter STEM fields, it's necessary to have training in computer programming and robotics. Only a very small percentage, about 5% of Bunkham high schoolers, can get into the small STEM high school. BCS has already announced that they will spend millions of dollars renovating what we know as the home economics kitchens to train students for entry-level food service jobs. These jobs are low-paying and often do not lead to a more promising career with higher pay. You're also aware that the local bill that created Bunkham's $12 million per year construction fund can be amended, allowing you to request that some expenditures be converted to teaching and learning. This could mean a higher supplement for teachers, more money to attract those hard-to-find science, math, and special education teachers, or textbooks and instructional supplies for the classroom. We already know that the capital outlay money can simply be converted to the classroom by making a request to the state treasurer's office. For the sake of our students and teachers, I hope you'll have the courage to vet these expenditures, even if it means tabling the decision until next month. Thank you for making our children's education your top priority.
Thank you, Ms. Baldwin. Any other members of the public? Mr. Rice? Anyone else after Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You always like to see Jerry, don't you? It's refreshing to hear people ask for something to make accountability come up. One thing I'd like to bring to your attention early on the menu, the budget is going to be coming up, and it's going to be presented early. Why? I know why. Going to tax Bunkham County to death. Now, when you're going out for a bond referendum, when you're going to go and hug your neck on Thursday night over AB Tech for a $2 billion state bond, and I'm talking to four of you that are Democrats, that's, I can't talk to three because they ain't got no voting power. But the four of you are going to tax this county to death and probably run for chair and get it because this progressive bunch around here, they don't know what it is to conserve. They don't know how to live on a small budget, and they don't know how the poor people here in Bunkham County live because they live too high on the hawth. I'm here for the poor people, and I'm here for the people of campus, and I don't get down, see them hurt. Talk about domestic violence, there're going to be more than you can shake a stick at. And there've been a lot here. There're going to be a lot more because when you don't have jobs, and you don't have a way for people to get off the ground, it's just going to create more. And you're going to have a machine that's going to feed the judiciary system and the corruption of it all the way to the top of this courthouse over here, federal antistate. And you talk about corruption, this juvenile justice center is going to be a filter for exactly what I've told you and I'm going to tell you again, corruption. You say, our people might corrupt. No, but the judiciary system sure is. It's how they get in. Mr. Gant, you know better than anybody, you're a lawyer. Our DSS department wouldn't be as big as it is if the judiciary system were doing their job. You've got to filter it out in the beginning. Don't give the justice center a place to migrate and to grow this kind of corruption, and they might not even be aware they're growing it. You got me? I can educate them on it, and I'm going to because this is a national problem. This ain't Bunkham County problem. It's a national problem of corruption, and DSS used to be the big one. Now, they're using these justice centers, and they're going to be what the state is keeping their eyes on as well as the federal government on housing all these people under one roof. That's the way you get corruption when you house them under one roof.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rice.
You're welcome.
The next matter is we will entertain a motion to follow the agenda as it has been presented, and that would include approving the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Frost. Is there a second? Second by the chairman. Any discussion?
I did have a certain confusion on the board appointments. I just want to make sure that I just corrected it. We're voting on the Riverfront Development Commission's amendment. TDA shows one vacancy, so we'll interview for that. I think the next three we interview for within the board would be equalization. The reason I'm saying, Senator Chairman, is that the EDC on the agenda that people may be seeing showing three vacancies, but it only has one, and that's why we're in trouble.
Okay, thank you.
And on the bottom, the board of equalization and review, there's five reappointments. I think we'll, we said we're voting on that tonight.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I just wanted to correct the three vacancies on the EDC.
Good, okay. Three people went in one position. That's right. Thank you. All right. There's been a motion and a second to approve the agenda as it's presented. I guess we'll also, we're taking out high wire and not the incentive not be a public hearing held on that. Any discussion of the proposed agenda? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of adopting the agenda as we've printed minus the high wire brewing, say aye. I'll oppose, no. Then we will follow the agenda by seven to zero vote, and if anyone is here on any consent agenda items, they have been handled and approved.
Is the EDC, is it one or three appointments? There are three appointments?
Oh, so there are three appointments for three, and we've got three candidates.
Yes, it says one.
Yeah, it says, it does say one.
It is three.
Okay. Well, we can revisit that. Let's go ahead and proceed when we get to that. Y'all be thinking about that if you want to appoint tonight, we can do that. That's normally been our policy, but let's just, I'm going to table that for now and we'll get back to that when we get to it. Okay. The next item on the agenda that we've adopted is the zoning request. This is First Citizen Bank Madison N R1 to R2. Debbie Trumpy is here to tell us about this, explain this for us. Debbie?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the First Citizens Banking Trust has applied to rezon tax lot pin 0629860726 located at 15 Dixon Drive from R1 single-family residential to R2 residential. The property is approximately 0.49 acres and is located between Dixon Drive and Florida Avenue within a residential neighborhood to the south of Bridgecrest Conference Center and I-40. The neighborhood contains a mix of single-family residences manufactured home, a multifamily structure, and seasonal residences. The subject parcel contains an existing structure that was built in 1959 as a tenement motel and restaurant and operated as such until the motel restaurant ceased operation in July of 2014 due to foreclosure. The use of the property as a motel restaurant had been an existing nonconforming use since the adoption of the countywide zoning in 2009. The zoning ordinance requires that any nonconforming use of a structure be discontinued when it is discontinued for more than 180 days. The structure cannot thereafter be used except in conformance with the regulations of the district in which it is located. The nonconforming use of this property has now ceased for approximately a year and a half, and any further use of the structure would be required to conform to the requirements of the R1 district in which it's located. The existing structure is different in size, scale, and building type than the rest of the surrounding neighborhood. The current property owner is seeking the rezoning to R2 in order to use the property as a bed and breakfast, which would be reviewed as a conditional use and which would limit the number of guests and provide a more comfortable fit with the surrounding neighborhood. The planning department recommends approval of the rezoning as it is consistent with the Bunkham County comprehensive land use plan. The 2013 plan update identifies mixed-use development as highly suggested within reasonable proximity to major transportation corridors and in combined water and sewer service areas. This property is located adjacent to a paved NCDOT road, Dixon Drive, and within a quarter-mile old US 70 which directly accesses the I-40 portal. Additionally, the land use plan update highly suggests that mixed-use development be located outside of slope stability and flood hazard areas and outside steep slope areas. The proposed map amendment would be reasonable in the public interest as it meets a number of goals as identified in the land use plan and adaptively reuses an existing structure that was built for the specific purpose of a lodging facility. The planning board held a public hearing on this application December 21st last year. The applicant stated that because the structure was originally constructed as a motel and restaurant, it is unlikely that it can be converted to either a single-family or multifamily residence. One person spoke against the rezoning during public comment. He was concerned because the R2 district allows multifamily development, which would negatively affect the character and property values of the neighborhood. The planning board found that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the land use plan and is reasonable in the public interest and recommends approval of the application, and that was in a vote of three to two. I know we've had discussions before about spot zoning, and we've cautioned you about spot zoning, so I want to go into depth a little bit more about that.
say aye. I'll oppose, no. Then we will follow the agenda by seven to zero vote, and if anyone is here on any consent agenda items, they have been handled and approved.
Is the EDC, is it one or three appointments? Do they have three appointments?
Oh, so there are three appointments for three, and we've got three candidates.
Yes, he just said one.
Yeah, it says, it does say one.
It is three.
Okay. Well, we can revisit that. Let's, let's go ahead and proceed, and when we get to that, y'all be thinking about that if you want to appoint tonight, we can do that. That's normally been our policy, but let's just, I'm going to table that for now, and we'll get back to that when we get to the report. Okay, next, the next item on the agenda that we've adopted is the zoning request. This is First Citizen Bank Madison Inn, R1 to R2. Debbie Trumpy is here to tell us about this, explain this for us. Debbie?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the First Citizens Banking Trust has applied to rezon tax lot pin 0629860726, located at 15 Dixon Drive, from R1 single-family residential to R2 residential. The property is approximately 0.49 acres and is located between Dixon Drive and Florida Avenue, within a residential neighborhood to the south of Bridgecrest Conference Center and I-40. The neighborhood contains a mix of single-family residences, manufactured home, a multifamily structure, and seasonal residences. The subject parcel contains an existing structure that was built in 1959 as a tenement motel and restaurant, and operated as such until the motel restaurant ceased operation in July of 2014 due to foreclosure. The use of the property as a motel restaurant had been an existing nonconforming use since the adoption of the countywide zoning in 2009. The zoning ordinance requires that any nonconforming use of a structure be discontinued when it is discontinued for more than 180 days. The structure cannot thereafter be used except in conformance with the regulations of the district in which it is located. The nonconforming use of this property has now ceased for approximately a year and a half, and any further use of the structure would be required to conform to the requirements of the R1 district in which it's located. The existing structure is different in size, scale, and building type than the rest of the surrounding neighborhood. The current property owner is seeking the rezoning to R2 in order to use the property as a bed and breakfast, which would be reviewed as a conditional use, and which would limit the number of guests and provide a more comfortable fit with the surrounding neighborhood. The planning department recommends approval of the rezoning as it is consistent with the Buncombe County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The 2013 plan update identifies mixed-use development as highly suggested within reasonable proximity to major transportation corridors and with, in combined water and sewer service areas. This property is located adjacent to a paved NCDOT road, Dixon Drive, and within a quarter-mile old US 70 which directly accesses the I-40 portal. Additionally, the land use plan update highly suggests that mixed-use development be located outside of slope stability and flood hazard areas and outside steep slope areas. The proposed map amendment would be reasonable in the public interest, as it meets a number of goals as identified in the land use plan, and adaptively reuses an existing structure that was built for the specific purpose of a lodging facility. The planning board held a public hearing on this application on December 21st last year. The applicant stated that because the structure was originally constructed as a motel and restaurant, it is unlikely that it can be converted to either a single-family or multifamily residence. One person spoke against the rezoning during public comment. He was concerned because the R2 district allows multifamily development, which would negatively, negatively affect the character and property values of the neighborhood. The planning board found that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the land use plan, and is reasonable in the public interest, and recommends approval of the application, and that was in a vote of three to two. I know we've had discussions before about spot zoning, and we've cautioned you about spot zoning, so I want to go into depth a little bit more about that. Zoning a relatively small area differently from the surrounding area is illegal unless you establish a reasonable basis for the spot zone. So the factors that must be considered for treating this property differently from the surrounding properties are whether this property has different characteristics than the neighboring properties, and this property does have an existing building which is materially different than the surrounding properties. What are the permitted uses in the new zoning district as opposed to the surrounding properties? And both the R1 and R2 districts are residential districts, and there is an existing multifamily structure in the immediate vicinity of this property. Is the rezoning reasonable and in the public interest? The existing building is not suitable for conversion to another use, and it's a concern that this property would just be abandoned and become a nuisance property without the rezoning. And is the rezoning consistent with the land use plan? And it is consistent, as I've discussed and as provided in the planning board's resolution. I'd be happy to address any questions you have for me now.
Any questions before we have our public hearing? Okay, thank you, Mr. Rice. And I will open the public hearing on this matter. I have 4:52. Does any member of the public wish to be heard on the rezoning request for Citizens Madison Inn, R1 to R2? Seeing or hearing none, last call. I'll declare the public hearing closed at 4:50, 4:53, or 4:54. Okay. Any discussion, board, any questions, discussion, comments? Hearing none, entertain a motion to consider the recommendations.
I'd like to consider our, make a motion to approve the recommendation, because it's consistent with the land use plan.
And in the public interest?
And in the public interest.
You made a motion, is there a second? Second by Commissioner DeBruhl. Is there any further discussion? Got this building that's, it's there, it may not have fitted when it was built, but it's there now, so. Yeah, then there's the place, 59 into 70.
So here it goes, here it goes, it's pretty, it would have met condition use, if they would, if they would reply, or if they were interested in this, then it would have been a problem.
It could have been kept in use, if it would have just been existing, nonconforming use, but for cause that it was foreclosed on and was discontinued operations, whatever you're.
Right, any other questions or comments? We have a motion by Commissioner Frost, a second by Commissioner DeBruhl. I'll bring a call and question, unless we have any other comments. Okay. All, all those in favor of the motion to approve the zoning request, say aye.
Aye.
All of those, no. And that is approved by seven to zero vote. Thank you. The next order of business is the Capitol Projects Ordinance. We have Julie Cliff Nicholson to tell us about the Family Justice Center contributions and contracts.
Good evening. Thank you, thank you for the opportunity this evening to recognize our community's investment in the Family Justice Center. In Buncombe County, domestic violence and sexual violence impact both the direct victims of these crimes and our community as a whole. Studies have linked long-term mental and behavioral health issues to domestic and sexual violence, including PTSD, depression, and anxiety, and even increased suicide and substance abuse risk. Children who are exposed to violence in their homes struggle with poor coping skills, trouble learning at school, difficulty maintaining healthy relationships, and as we know from the At First Childhood Experiences study, are at higher risk for developing chronic health conditions such as diabetes, asthma, and heart disease. In the past, in Buncombe County, survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault have felt afraid to come forward and face a complex and confusing system in seeking protection from abuse. But now, Buncombe County is coming together to implement a smart, practical, and proven solution to this, to support survivors of their deep safety. We are partnering with public and private agencies, including law enforcement, nonprofit service providers, the district attorney's office, Mission Hospital, and other support services, to create a Family Justice Center. Through the Family Justice Center, we will provide victims with one location where they can access supportive services, file criminal reports, find the help they need to access safety for themselves and their children. This project will help us build a stronger system of support among survivors of domestic violence. We are at our strongest when the government, private companies, nonprofit faith leaders, and community leaders come together to say enough. We are committed to stopping domestic and sexual violence in our community. As our Board of Commissioners, you have demonstrated incredible leadership in investing in this work. By supporting the Family Justice Center, you are leading our community in preventing domestic and sexual violence. Other members of our community are also investing in this and partnering in this project, and tonight I am honored to recognize the sponsors who have helped support the renovation of the Family Justice Center. To date, we've received sponsorship support from American South General Contractors, H&amp;M Constructors, the Genesis Alliance, James R. Benoy and Sons Construction, Keith Hargrove Architects, Paget and Freeman Architects. We've also received in-kind contributions for parts of the renovation from J.J. Flooring Group and the Shaw Contract Group. We have some representatives of some of these companies and organizations in the audience. I'd love to ask you to stand so we can recognize you this evening. Thank you.
Are they on?
Sure, absolutely.
Go, introduce yourself.
Cynthia Thorpe, for Genesis Alliance, raising money annually to help domestic violence, and child abuse, and scholarships. For me.
Mike Hammer from the J.J. Flooring Group.
I'm Gene Edwards, President of Paget and Freeman Architects.
Just established also with Genesis Alliance. Thank you, thank you all for being here and for your support. As we recognize these community partners tonight, we're also excited to share with you plans for our sponsor recognition artwork to be displayed in the lobby of the Family Justice Center. This artwork, entitled Pathway, is a collaborative project between local glass and metal artists, Catherine Adams and Tina Kousel. According to the artist's description, the Blue Ridge Mountains represent strength, stability, and a sense of safety. The loose leaves represent the individuals whose lives bring them to the center. Connected leaves create the logo to convey a sense of hope, safety, and strength. The leaves that start outside of the circle and end connected represent the growth of the individual. Thank you to the county commissioners and to these companies and organizations for being a part of this public-private partnership. This investment that Buncombe County and these organizations are making in this project is helping to build a path to strength, safety, and hope for survivors of domestic and sexual violence.
Julie, any idea of opening date?
We are hopeful to be ready to serve survivors in July, and looking at a grand opening in mid-August.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I, I think it's, everything is fantastic, and with your leadership I have. I had a question about the educational components that might be involved with law enforcement as well as victims as far as not only physical abuse, but stalking, cyber stalking, things like that. Is that, how does that weave in?
Absolutely. As part of the community, the coordinated community response to domestic violence, we're doing substantial amounts of outreach to community organizations, survivors, and learning from each other as partner organizations. As you mentioned, January was Stalking Awareness Month, and we know that stalking behavior is significantly dangerous to the victims. When we see stalking behavior, it's one of those situations that we want to pay special attention to. The Family Justice Center will certainly provide the opportunity for victims of stalking to access services from a coordinated group of folks down the center.
And law enforcement certainly knows that, how insidious stalking is, and they take that seriously, because I can imagine sometimes victims don't want to come forward because they think they're crazy, or?
We, we're lucky to have great partners in law enforcement.
That's great.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I've got a comment. One, I want to thank you for the presentation and the, the job on the artwork and this, you know, the pathway and, and all that works very, very well, so congratulations on, on that. And I was curious as to how those that wanted to make a donation, most people may not know what the Buncombe County Service Foundation is, is this, just, correct me if I'm wrong, so that we can actually receive money as accounting, we can receive money, and then that money goes, goes out for services, right? Okay, so obviously, these, these folks learned about that they could participate, that they could help in, in this endeavor, so can you speak about that, how, how that happened, and is there opportunity for others to be able to, to do that in the future? And are we facilitating that and getting news out that they can, they can actually be a, be a partner in this great work?
We certainly would welcome future donations from community partners through the Buncombe County Service Foundation, there's a website available, and the community's support of this project is what has made it so successful thus far, and will continue to sustain this
I've got it at website, there's actually a one-page document, and it summarizes the needs, and allows sponsors, and these are examples of the sponsors, to actually do the renovation of a therapy den or a family den, a safe place for victims and children to receive intervention and therapy. Most of our sponsors have actually sponsored the entire renovation, the entire renovation.
That's great. Well, I wanted to thank them, but I also wanted to make sure that more of that information got out for those that might want to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I just want to thank you again, thank you for coming tonight, thank you for caring about our community, and, and all the contributions are going to go to people that may never thank you directly, because they're traumatized or they're having other issues, but you get it, and we thank you for understanding and taking care of people who maybe don't have the resources and the opportunities that some of the rest of us do. So thank you for sharing.
One comment.
Yes, sir, Mr. Brown.
Thank Bill Newman's in the House, and I think you're part of this deal with the support of, appreciate if you didn't stand up, but know your support of him.
All right, thank you very much. The next item of business we have is the approval of the Buncombe County Schools Facility Needs Survey. Tim Furley is here, not Tim Forrest here too, but Furley's going to give us the word once again. Thank you, Tim, it's good to see you again.
I'm Tim Furley, Facilities Director for Buncombe County Schools. Thank you, commissioners and staff, for inviting us here, and my colleagues at Asheville City Schools, to review the facility needs survey that we intend to submit to North Carolina Department of Public Instruction upon your approval. We submitted it to the Board of Education, and they have reviewed and approved it, and now it's before you. Basically, every five years, the Department of Public Instruction requests information about our schools, about our, our capital improvements, that we have, that we have needs, that we have, are making, about our capacity, our membership, energy usage, those types of things, and they compile it and are, are able to have a database across statewide. Buncombe County Schools has identified a number of needs. We do not have a large increasing membership. The state provides their projections to us, and across 10 years, there's a small increase projected in the membership, but it is not a, a large increase. So the, many of the facility needs that we've identified are not related to increasing capacity of our schools. However, you will see, if you dig into this, that our capacity does increase, does increase. And let me explain how that happens. We've got 88 modulators at Buncombe County Schools. I don't recall purchasing a new modular within the last 10 or 12 years. So our modular stock is aging significantly. As they get old, they, they are never really very efficient to operate to begin with, but as they get old, they of course require increasing maintenance. And there's a point where it doesn't make sense to put significant money into a modular. The heating and air systems last typically about 15 years, so you need to replace some roofs, the decks, ADA access, communications, there's a lot of components that go into a modular. You have an ADA ramp there that sometimes is made of wood. They all need work, and so most of the additions that you would see, something that's classified as an addition, is a game plan to try to eliminate modulators and replace them with bricks and mortar. And that many times does result in an increased capacity, because the Department of Public Instruction does not count the capacity of a modular in the school capacity. The other types of, of needs we've identified are boiler and chiller replacements, roofs, fire alarm replacements, HVAC controls, modifications to some of our entrances of schools to maintain school safety, ADA renovations for accessibility. There's several large projects in there. Our community high school is in poor shape and needs, needs a game plan there. North Buncombe Middle School and North Buncombe Elementary School are, are schools with a large number of modulators and would require, in order to replace them, would require an addition. And our Avery's Creek Elementary School on the south side of town is another large project that you see. I'm sure you are well aware of all the development that's happening on that side of town, and it is starting to put a, a real crunch on our capacity of our schools on the south side. The Board of Ed did redraw district lines last year, and with the, with this year, we haven't decreased the, the membership in those schools. In fact, they've increased in our, our Avery's Creek, which is our tightest school. So with that, I want to thank you for your support through the years. We feel very grateful that the county commissioners have been a great partner for public education, and I'm available to answer any questions.
I have a few. Tim, these are listed by, not in order of need, I'm taking, it looks like it's just listed, they're all the, it's like they're the kind of the same order. Do you rank them as far as what needs to be done first, second, third?
When you look at the, the needs in the zero to five years, and six to 10, the only way they rank them is when you report they are needed. So if you say this is needed in year one to three, it would put it in the top priority. If you need it in year three or four or five, it'd be the second priority. If you need it in six to 10, so it's not ranked, you know, from beginning to end, but by kind of the timeframe in categories.
Okay. And the other question I had, and Mr. Dr. Kousel will probably talk about this, is I understand the city school population's going up, and the counties is flat to going downward?
It has been in the last two years, yes.
And that's a flip from the past.
That's correct.
Is that just urban trends, people want to live more in the city, and maybe, this might be a question for the city schools more.
Well, it could be charter schools, private schools. We did see a downturn in, when the economic... We did see a downturn in, when the economic downturn happened, but we kind of held steady. But there has been a drop. And it's pure speculation on my part and I'm not sure I have an answer to that. Although DPI does project a continued small drop for the next couple of years, but then a rise again in the, at the end of their period of 10 years. They're seeing an increase in the population. Whether that holds true, I don't know. And where their numbers come from, I couldn't answer that.
Okay, well, if you take the alternative schools, charter schools, private schools, is the, do you have a number on the overall student population in the county? Is that going up if everything's taken into account, public and private?
That's a great question. And last year, for the first time, we looked at the charter schools and the public, or the private schools and such, and we looked at our transfers. And we just kind of scratched the surface. Every spring, we do a facilities work session. And that's what the board would, one of the key topics they'd like us to look at and dig in a little bit deeper is where are these kids and where are they going? As the entire, so I can't answer that now, but I will be able to in the spring.
All right, Mr. Furley. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I had two actually. So to that subject, are there, I guess it'd be interesting to find out if we're losing kids before they get to middle school, like when they make that transition into middle school. If they're leaving to public school then, I'd be curious to find that out.
We do know the numbers and I'm afraid I couldn't cite them as where we do kind of lose kids. And one of the conclusions that seems obvious is that a lot of times, parents will take their kids out of elementary school early and go towards a charter or a private school in anticipation of middle school because they're trying to get their kid in that system. And then they come back at high school.
Yeah.
A lot come back at high school, homeschoolers and such due to...
And then the other question, I'm very happy to see the community high school is at the top of the list. So I understand there are some plans moving forward with that? Is there any?
We have looked at no less than five different options. And we're, the board is about to meet and review the options and hopefully give us some direction. But we were kind of honing in on it and the, where the board has pointed us to is let's stay on site. And so those are the options we're exploring in depth now.
Certainly that seems to be what the faculty and students there, I mean, they're so proud of what they do there.
It's not an ideal site in that it's at one side of the county.
Right.
That's been the downfall.
Right.
But it is at home there. Folks are comfortable with it. And we do have a system that works and that brings kids there. So, and it is a site that has some available property, which isn't always the case in the center of the county.
Right. It's very loved there.
So I have a question about the intermediate school. In fact, the ECA Intermediate School is being built, which looks fantastic by the way, is going to take pressure off the middle school. It's going to take pressure off of three elementary schools. So is there already plans regarding those modulators at that time? Do you think you'll probably be taking some of those out and as the, because all the population's going to decrease in those four schools?
We will take out modulators when their repair and operation costs become, kind of outdistance their utility. The other issue with modulators is that they've become a safety concern. Kids have to go outside their bricks and mortar building to go to the modular. So that would fall into that decision-making as well. So if we have excessively old modulators and we have not looked at that right now, schools do not like to give up any facilities if they have them. We have, there isn't really a great market for the modulators. You don't get much of anything for them because they're very difficult to transport, costly to set up. And usually when we get rid of them, they're pretty much worn out. But we have used them as storage buildings. We've kind of renovated them with siding and roof. And then they've become very valuable storage at high schools and such for athletics. So we haven't looked at those modulators at those specific schools, but that's a good observation and something we do need to look at.
And I think for me, you know, the point for me is that those kids will, a lot of those kids will come out of those and they will come into the brick and mortar structure. And at certain, at some of the schools, you know, the safety issue is pretty obvious. It's not necessarily that difficult to bypass the main entrance to access a modular. And I know that's what you're referring to, so.
Correct.
But that will be, on those four schools, that will be definitely dealt with when the intermediate school comes online.
Sometimes things like music, things that are loud, they kind of like them out there because they're, if we don't have a good solution for, you know, sound isolation in the classroom, there may be cases like that that they do remain.
Thank you.
Tim, in the last several cycles that you've done this, is this the first time you've had a decrease or not a big increase? Because it seems like population was just going up. Most of the time I've been a commissioner.
Since I have been here, I only remember one other time that we had a dip in population. And that was when there was another economic downturn and it only lasted a year or maybe two and then came back pretty strong. So this is the second time that I recall this happening. Over the long period of time, when you look back, there has been those kinds of hills and valleys. But generally, it's on the rise.
Okay. All right. Anything else? All right, thank you, Mr. Furley. There is, by law, we have to approve, not that we agree that this is what we're going to do, but we agree that we have gotten a copy of this. Specifically, the signature line is, we received a renewed copy, does not, and it specifically says on it, does not necessarily constitute endorsement or commitment to fund the Facility Needs Survey. And it has Chairman and Manager of Signature Lines. So any further discussion among us about this request to look at these issues and we have received them? Is there a motion to approve that we have received this survey? A motion by Commissioner Veltzer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frost. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Can we approve the approval of getting this? Thank you so much. Well, next here from the Asheville City Schools, which I think have an increase. And we're looking forward to hear about that. Dr. Terrence McAllister, Assistant Superintendent for Student Support Services. Thank you for being here, Dr.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I would say ditto to everything that my colleague said in regards to Buncombe County Schools. Just to add a few additional items to what's already been mentioned as it relates to the Facility Needs Survey that is provided by Department of Public Construction. It is of course a statutory requirement that we do this every five years. It was first initiated in 1995 by the General Assembly. And they adopted a committee to school capital construction study commission in order to ensure that this process takes place every five years. So as part of that particular process, this particular planning that we are discussing, that survey talks of course about the capacity, cost worksheets, and various reports. And all that information is uploaded to a Microsoft Access spreadsheet in order for Department of Public Construction to receive that information. So in relation to Asheville City Schools, we do have the same challenges with chiller. We do have the same challenges with the modules and respect to the modulators having a particular permit. And it makes it a little bit more difficult to use modules since we are in the city. The other thing with Asheville City Schools, we do have aging buildings. Some of our buildings, especially our high school building, still has plumbing from back when the school was created in 1928. So we're trying to fix some of those challenges and/or issues that we have as it relates to our schools. Based on the challenges and issues that we have as it relates to these facility surveys in Nashville City Schools in general and in respects to our buildings, we identify our critical priorities, identify our high priorities, and then we of course have our priorities. And we have a plan, a five-year plan, a facility five-year plan on, based on priority, what we're going to do each year. And we try to make sure that we attribute funds to those particular areas to ensure that we take care of those areas, that we can have a safer learning environment for all of our students and for any stakeholders that may want to visit our school at any particular time. Again, this survey is just an opportunity to have long-range plans so the Department of Public Construction is aware of what's going on in local school districts, that we are aware of our challenges and that they are aware of our challenges to keep them abreast of what's going on. The other part of this particular survey also identifies a number of teacher sections that we have within each building. So that allows you to determine how many teachers are in the classrooms that you have within that building. It also allows you to look at various schematics of each individual school to ascertain if any particular needs, as in interior aspects of the school as well as the exterior parts of the school. So in short, that's the summation of the needs survey as it relates to our discussion today. If there's any questions that I can answer, I'll be glad to do that.
I'll ask you the same question. And I understand in the short run, you're going up.
Yes, sir.
But this, I'm seeing that projects over the next 10 years, you're going to go down.
And all likelihood that I've numbers that you were looking at. Now, we had a comprehensive study done, from my understanding, I'm new to Asheville City Schools. So it's my understanding, we had a comprehensive assessment done on our buildings in the year 2014. So Department of Public Construction informed us to extract that information from that particular information. So that's the information that you're looking at presently. But if you look at our growth status for Asheville City Schools today going forward and based on our strategic plan that we have in place, our numbers will increase dramatically over the next few years, which is why we're present in a conversation about restructuring our school district to fit the needs that we're going to have in our school system as it relates to students. More specifically, those numbers are increasing because we have an influx of third, fourth, and fifth graders. So our numbers of third, fourth, and fifth graders are kind of high as it relates to previous years. So that shows an influx and an increase in our number of students. Of course, of course, they got to go, if they leave elementary, they go to middle school. So we have to have a place to house them and then they have to go to high school if they have to house them. And then also, we admit students outside of our district, as you all, I'm sure, with those numbers. So our numbers are steadily increasing. We foresee that they will continue to increase. That's why we're partaking in a conversation in regards to restructuring at the present.
I mean, I'm saying, I've heard a number of eight or 18% increase. I mean, it's not just a little bit.
Yes, sir.
You're really growing. Most of it's West Asheville, there's the influx of young families in the West Asheville areas that desire a place to live.
Exactly. And that's what initiated the conversation about our strategic plan and looking at the possibility of restructuring. Because West Asheville is growing like leaps and bounds. And so we're trying to put a plan together to answer those particular needs and/or questions as it relates to West Asheville so we can ensure that we have appropriate place and location to educate our students.
Good. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Dr. Councillor.
Thanks, sir.
Hearing none. Is there any discussion among the board of the City School Facility Needs Survey? Is there a motion to adopt that we have received the copy and are acknowledging that they have sent and told us these are their names?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Commissioner Frost, seconded by Vice Chair Newman. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Next, we have board appointments. Let's go ahead and take up the Economic Development Coalition. There are three, is that true? There are three vacancies and three appointments? Okay. So is there, earlier we approved the agenda to interview them. Do people want to interview them with three, or do you want to go ahead and appoint them?
I need to be appointed tonight.
In the past, we've always, there's three with. Sir, I'm here to consensus to go ahead and make that appointment. Three appointments, three people, and let's just go ahead and do that unless there's objections.
I think they're all great candidates. I'm supportive.
Okay. All right. Well, let's start with, let's go in order. Riverfront Redevelopment Commission, there's one vacancy. Let's just, let's just poll this out. Let's do a poll for this one.
First name, Quinn.
First name, Quinn.
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 I think we've got it. All right. Are there any nominations? Well, let's just, let's see. I guess we can poll for the TDA also. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We just said that. Yep. TDA will be interviewed. That will be March 1st. And we will make, we have, we actually have several commissioners out that day. So we may want to, I think, that might be an issue. I guess we can deal with that separately. I don't want to spring on anybody. Did anybody object to that? Just do it. Look, we're going to be here anyway. Okay, that way everybody could have a say in that. And then as far as the meeting, whoever's not in the mix, it seems like I heard at least two of you might not be here. Let's nail that down because that may affect that meeting. So please get with the clerk about that if you're not going to be here for any of this getting. Okay, don't do that tonight. Next, we have Economic Development Coalition. We have three candidates. Let's just take a nomination on that since we have three. Are there nominations for that?
I don't know. Maybe Zerema, Envol, Janice Pramit, Brad.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Okay. All those in favor of those individuals being appointed, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And they are appointed by a six to zero vote. I've been saying seven to zero.
I already have a strong vote.
Yeah, yeah, I'm thinking of her. Historic Resource Commission, they have two people for one vacancy, so we will not appoint that. Board of Equalization Review, we have...
We're going to set the entries up for that same day.
Yeah, let's just do them both at the same time. Yeah, that's good. Thank you. Board of Equalization Review, five reappointments. Any nominations? I nominate Mike Presentic, Jerome Jones, Mark Morris, Jim Edmonds, and Debbie Blaine. Are there any other nominations? All those in favor of those individuals, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Then they are adopted by a six to zero vote. I think that we have established a closed session. Is that right, Mr. Turner? Okay, announcements. February 16th at 4 o'clock, our commissioners, your commissioners will hold a workshop with nonprofit agencies to hear their budget requests for the fiscal year 2017 budget in Room 326 at 200 College Street in downtown Asheville. On February 22nd, our tax office will open the new location at 94 Cox Avenue. March 1st at 4:30 will be our next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners at 200 College Street in downtown Asheville. In March 15th, we have a primary election day. We will not have a commissioner meeting that day. Are there any other announcements? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Vice Chair, seconded by Commissioner Veltzer. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.